The city of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Father Louis Powell of St. Michael's Church.
Please stand. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of San Clemente. We pray your blessing on all who govern our city, especially those gathered here tonight. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are all stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, renew us in the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance for a great country. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hamm.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ward.
Here.
Mayor Baker is absent, and Councilmember Doncheck is also absent, but she asked me to read the following statement on her behalf. Councilmember Doncheck is unable to attend this meeting as she is traveling on business for the Orange County Transportation Authority. She asked that the following be expressed. Thank you to Councilwoman Baker for his eight years of dedication to our city. Bob served our city well. Also, congratulations to Councilwoman Hamm and incoming Councilman Swartz on their new terms on the city council. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the results of the general municipal election held on November 8th, 2016. A general municipal election was held in the city on November 8th for the purpose of electing two members of the city council, one city treasurer and one city clerk, and also posed to the voters a question relating to whether the transient occupancy tax should be increased. The election was consolidated with the general election that was conducted on the same date by the county of Orange. Thirty-three thousand two hundred fifty-nine of San Clemente's thirty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-four registered voters cast ballots in this election for a voter turnout of eighty-five point six percent. Five citizens competed for the office of city council, and Chris Hamm and Stephen Swartz were the two candidates receiving the highest number of votes. One candidate competed for the office of city treasurer, that was Mark A. Taylor. He ran alone and was elected. One person, myself, Joanne Bade, appeared on the ballot as the sole candidate for the office of city clerk and was elected. Measure OO, the increase in the hotel guest tax, a total of fifteen thousand thirty-five votes, voters voted in favor of the measure, and fifteen thousand forty-three voters voted in opposition to the measure. The measure required a majority vote to pass. Because of the closeness of the vote, the council at its meeting of December 6th determined to pursue a recount of the votes cast. Subsequent to that action, however, the registrar of voters informed the city that a recount request must be submitted by a voter with a stated position in the matter, as opposed to being submitted by the city as a nonpartisan corporate person. Consequently, the recount request was abandoned. Because the number of votes cast in opposition to the measure exceeded the number of votes cast in favor of the measure, Measure OO failed to pass and will not take effect. At this time, I would request that council adopt the resolution reciting the fact of the November 8th, 2016 election.
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Hamm. All in favor?
Aye.
Three in favor. Doncheck absent, and Baker absent.
Okay. At this time, the deputy city clerk will administer the oath of office to newly-elected city clerk Bade and city treasurer Taylor. See here? There he is. Okay.
Okay, if you'll both raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mark Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. I'll have you both sign.
And at this time, I would ask for councilmembers-elect Hamm and Swartz to meet me at the podium.
Sure you want to do this? Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chris Hamm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Go Hamm!
Okay. At this time, you may take a place at the dais.
I would like to nominate Kathy Ward to be the new mayor of San Clemente.
Is there a package nomination? Are there any other nominations? In that case, could we have a motion to close nominations and to appoint Councilmember Ward to the office of mayor?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to open the nominations for Mayor Protem.
I nominate Councilwoman Tim Brown to Mayor Protem.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? No? At this time, then I will ask, I will state that Tim Brown is Mayor Protem, and he can take his place. Oh, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Four zero. Welcome.
You ready comments at this time?
I do have a comment, if you would. That'd be okay. I would just like to, first of all, thank all those who participated in this election. It was hotly contested, and I feel at the end of the day that this council will continue to serve faithfully and well the city of San Clemente in all that we do. I would like to, however, thank my colleague and somebody who has served the city very well for the past eight years, and that's Bob Baker. He has been a two-time mayor. He has been extremely diligent in the service of the city. He has always done what is best for the voters and for the residents, and I couldn't have asked for a better colleague, for a better person, mentor, man to have served alongside. I'm deeply grateful for his service, and I'd just like to thank him for all that he's done for the city. And I know he's going to be extremely unhappy golfing all the days of his life now, so he's gonna enjoy his time off, but I just want to thank him for everything he's done, him and Pam, of course, and also welcome our new council member, as well as congratulate Chris on his election victory. So to our newly-elected, newly-elected and re-elected councilmembers, welcome, and to Bob, Godspeed, and thank you for everything you've done.
At this time, our newly-elected Steve Schwartz, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank my wife and all family and all the supporters that helped get me through this very strongly and very mounting election. It was very close, and as everybody in the city saw, every vote counts. And so, we had an eighty-six percent turnout, which I thought was amazing. And again, I want to thank you all. I'm looking forward to putting a very contested contest behind us and move forward to work together to what we want to call the full city. We want to make it better than it is today. It's as simple as that. And I'm open to working with anybody, anytime, on any of the issues to make that happen. And again, I thank you.
Councilman Hamm, would you like to make a statement?
Yeah. See what's going on here.
Testing to thank you again.
Yeah, so like newly-elected Councilman Schwartz, I'd just like to thank my wife, who endured an awful lot this election season. She went through a lot the last four years, and without her, I wouldn't have been able to accomplish any of the things that I've accomplished. I'd just like to thank my mother and my aunt, who are sitting in the audience. You know, being raised in San Clemente by a single mother probably wasn't the easiest thing for her to do, but I was afforded many opportunities, I think, that I got specifically because I was raised here in San Clemente. And from a young age, I instilled a lot of pride in myself for this community, and I thought that when I had the opportunity, I'd give back to ensure that the future generations have the same opportunity I had to grow up in a place like San Clemente. So I'd just like to say thank you for all my friends, my family, for all the supporters. It meant a lot to get your support again this election season. And yeah, so I just want to say thank you to everybody who supported me, and I look forward to the next four years, so thank you for the opportunity.
Joanne, is there any cards?
No.
Speaker cards? Okay.
Okay.
So let's move on.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a holiday serenade by the members of the fifth-grade class at Vista Del Mar Elementary School, under the direction of Debbie Peterson and Greg Rennie.
Hi, I'm Debbie Peterson, and this is my team partner, Greg Rennie. We are the vocal music teachers in San Clemente and Dana Point, part of the Capistrano Unified School District. We thank you, mayor and city council members, so much for inviting our fifth-grade choir from Vista Del Mar Elementary School to sing for you today. We are excited and honored. Their principal, Dr. Troy Hunt, is here today, as well as Neil Anderson, Capitol's VAPA Director for the Visual and Performing Arts. Thank you, and thank you, parents and community, for supporting us and being here today. We'd like to first start off with a fun Christmas medley called "Jingle All the Way." This will be followed by a wonderful medley of songs from the Nightmare Before Christmas and a Charlie Brown Christmas, who will then end with a fun song called "Chop and Joy."
Dashin' through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh, where the geese go, la, 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 way, ha, 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 bells on the bells ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Deck the halls with boughs of holly, fa, la, 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 fa, la, la, la. It's the season to be jolly, fa, la, 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 fa, la, la, la. Don't be now our gay apparel, fa, la, 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 fa, la, la, la. Droll the ancient yuletide carol, fa, la, 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 fa, la, la, la. Charlie old Saint Nicholas, clean your hair this way. Don't you tell a single soul what I'm going to say. Christmas Eve is coming soon, now you dear old man. Whisper what you'll bring to me, tell me if you can. Over the river and through the woods, to trim the cows we go. The horses are late to bury the sleigh, they're white and dressed in snow. Over the river and through the woods, the wild wind it blow. It sneaks and throws and dyes the robes, and over the grounds we go. Up on the house stop, reindeer claws. Out jumps good old Santa Claus. Down through the chimney with lots of toys, all for the little ones, Christmas toys. Ho, 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 who would it go? Ho, 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 who would it go? Up on the house stop, click, click, click. Down through the chimney with good Saint Nick. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, and a happy new year. Good tidings to you wherever you are. Good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, and a happy new year. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, from the bottom of my heart, of my heart. What's this, what's this? There is colored red hair. What's this, there are white things in the air. What's this? I can't believe my eyes, I must be dreaming. Wake up Jack, this isn't fair. What's this? What's this, what's this? There is something very wrong. What's this? There are people singing songs. What's this? The children laugh with little creatures laughing. Everybody seems so happy, have I possibly undapped? What is this? What's this? There are children throwing snowballs instead of throwing pets. They are busy building toys and absolutely no one's there. There is frost on every window, oh, I can't believe my eyes. And in my mouth, I feel the warmth that's coming from inside. The sex, the sounds are everywhere and all around. I've never felt so good before. This empty place inside of me is filling up. I simply cannot get enough. I want it, oh, I want it, oh, I want it for my own. I guess you know, I guess you know, this is the place that I have found. What is this? Christmas time is here. Happiness and cheer. Fun for all that children call their favorite time of year. Christmas time is here. We'll be drawing near. Oh, that we could always see such spirit through the year. Sleigh bells in the air. Beauty everywhere. Yuletide by the fireside, and joyful memories there. Christmas time is here. We'll be drawing near. Oh, that we could always see such spirit through the year.
And I ask simply that we tonight have transparency, that we know what happened and why it happened. There's no harm, no foul. Everything came out fine, and I would have voted in favor. The question was, was it legal to vote in favor? And I don't think we ever did find out the answer. I got a lot of communications. I sent letters, and you've all probably read them. Maybe you threw them away. But I think we deserve this council to decide to find out what happened and to give us a, get us a discussion of why it happened, because I don't think this city should be going through with meetings, notice the day of the meeting, so that the city doesn't know what's happening. So my fundamental frustration is that's what occurred. It doesn't fall under the exception for emergency meetings. I had a brief talk with some staff, and maybe it was legal. But can you imagine this council would schedule a council meeting and then decide to put five or 10 items on the council agenda that citizens don't know about? It could have been handled by a 24, 72-hour notice, and then everybody would have known, and we could have discussed it. So like I said, I'm not frustrated with the vote. I'm just frustrated with the procedure. And I would ask all of you to vote tonight to have a report from the city manager and the city attorney on what happened, because I don't see how, with the Brown Act, the city manager had any authority to overrule this council. I don't care if it was illegal. That could have been, and I suggested, a 24-hour notice meeting, so the council could vote to overturn their own action. Because I think when you vote, it means something. We elected you to run our city, and you do run our city in a very good way. And once you voted to have a recount, if it was illegal, this council should have voted not to go forward, not had it done by whoever it was, and I still can't figure out who that person was. So let's all have a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year's. Let's at least get a report if we can, and we'll all move forward. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Linda DeFonce, followed by Charlie Larwood. If you could stand up, be ready to speak.
Go ahead. Can I bend this?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, city council members. Congratulations on your election. My name is Linda DeFonce. I am a newer resident in San Clemente. We just moved here. We were on the East Coast for three years. Before that, we lived in Mission Viejo for about 15, where I raised my kids. And I was very involved in their education. And as a result, I was able to work with Mayor Frank Urie and Trish Kelly on school issues, traffic issues, things like that. I also was fortunate to work with Tony Beal, the mayor of Rancho Santa Margarita, on some other things. So speaking to city council about issues is not new for me. So this is a tough subject. I'm really concerned about some of the things that I have witnessed working down in San Clemente. I know a few of you ran your campaigns on the topic of the priority being the safety of residents, with more police presence, along with dealing with the transient and homeless problems. I, along with many others who work down in the shops, are really concerned for our safety, as well as the overall image that is portrayed to customers and visitors. My coworkers and I have had to step over people sleeping in front of our store to open it. They come inside looking for food once we are open. We don't offer food in this store. They were sleeping upstairs in our building until someone discovered it and made them leave. Most days, we see them walking the streets. There's a few that scream obscenities up and down Camino Real constantly. Someone defecated next to our store. It stayed in the alcove four days. It makes me sad, okay? I know this is a sensitive issue, but we have to, something has to be done. We have customers that drive a long distance and come and spend a lot of money in our store. And it's just, it's a really bad image, okay? And it's a safety issue, too. We have families. We have lots of people around that come to the restaurants, shop around, and it's just, it's just not healthy. It's not good for San Clemente. And I just wish that there was more of a police presence. There was more people offering something for them to do, somewhere for them to go eat. You can't require them to stay in a designated shelter. I realize that, and I know we have those. But I was made aware that there was a no trespassing ordinance in San Clemente. A lot of people are not even aware of that. So, you know, as much as I feel sorry for these people, we still have business to conduct. And I want to feel safe when I'm there from the hours of nine to seven at night and going back to my car, okay? That's all. I just, I want some attention being paid to this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Linda, I'm sorry. Linda, where do you work?
I work at Tuvalu, on the corner of Del Mar.
At Tuvalu, okay, all right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm not the owner. I work there.
Okay. I just, it wasn't clear where you worked, so I just wanted to ask the question. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Larwood.
Good evening, Mayor Ward, and members of the council. My name is Charlie Larwood. I live at 109 Paco de Cristobal. And tonight, I'm here to say thank you. We came to you in our neighborhood to ask you to re-stripe the street on the 100 and 200 block. And I'm here to tell you that work got done this year, and the feedback that I've gotten from a lot of the residents on our street was, it's really working well. And I just want to tell you, a lot of people come up here with legitimate complaints. I was one of them. And it's tough listening to all of that. And so we wanted to come back, myself representing our neighborhood, and tell you, we appreciate you. We appreciate your staff. Tom Frank came down to my house at a community meeting, on his way home from work, by the way, helped us through the process. Took a while, because we had to wait for the street to be resurfaced, and that traffic coming is working. We think the cars are slowing down. Did I mention that's the street that goes down to T Street? Just for reference. And, you know, the long, the short is, we appreciate it, and I don't think you hear that enough. So thank you very much.
Let me just comment on that real quick, Larry, because a lot of people get confused when they see a centerline deletion, like we did on your street, and they don't understand the impacts that it has to a residential neighborhood like Cristobal. We are starting to do that in a lot of places throughout our community, and initially, we get a lot of negative feedback about it. But once they see the results of it, they're very pleased with the results that come through. We just recently completed a study on Palazada, and I wanted to see if there's a 33% reduction in overall average speed on that road, which is a residential street. Most people treat it, just like Cristobal, as a through fare. They don't treat it as a residential neighborhood. So I just want to say thank you for coming to speak to us, and hopefully you can spread the word to other streets and other communities in San Clemente.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Steve Cullen.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and congrats. Mr. Schwartz, welcome and congratulations. I want to say thanks to my friend Bob Baker for eight years. I think the city council member should always be the city's best foot forward, and he certainly was that for eight years. I'm here on behalf of the citizens of San Clemente, once again. The hospital closed on the 31st of May. It was officially closed on the 1st of June, and people have died because of it. Mission is busting at the seams. And this, at this point, is not about assigning blame. It's about trying to redefine the problem that we have and trying best to address how we can fix it. I checked with Orange County Fire Authority, I'm with Orange County EMS, and the data is difficult to get. The questions that I had for them are how many people are dying in the back of an ambulance because they can't get up to Mission in time. And it's not just the transport times. It's not just a busy freeway. Mission, again, is busting at the seams, and if a paramedic unit is waiting at Mission because they can't drop their patient off and transfer care there appropriately, then they can't get back to the next San Clemente resident. If they have to go up to Irvine, again, the same thing is true. So it may be a question of, will it take 30 or 40 minutes for the ambulance to show up? Let alone, how long will it take to get you back up to Mission or the closest hospital? You can't legally die in the back of an ambulance. I know it sounds like a crazy thing to say, but if something happens in the back of an ambulance and you die, they cannot call a code. They cannot stop a code legally without a doctor saying that the code is called. So that can't legally happen in an ambulance. So there are no numbers that are posted or that we can follow that would say, you know, in 2014, this was the percent, and 2016, this is the percent, and in 2017, that's it. And additionally, if somebody does die in the back of an ambulance, or they show up to Mission Hospital in, you know, what we would call a code blue, that's not my business. I'm not allowed to call Orange County EMS. I'm not allowed to call Orange County Fire Authority and ask for that information as a private citizen, because it's their business and it's not mine. But you guys can do that. You know, in the interest of the safety of the citizens of San Clemente, you guys can request from the Orange County Fire Authority that information, and that's what I'm here to ask you to do. It may be a lot of information to go to. I would certainly volunteer to go through all those 911 calls. But that would, that could not be me as a private citizen. It would have to be somebody or some committee that you all appoint to actually find that information out. So that's my request of you. Again, in the interest of finding out and truly defining the problem, rather than giving you anecdotes, truly defining the problem and giving you real numbers, real data, so that we can act on it. Thank you.
Dr. Cullen, will you contact me with, so we can talk specifically about what information to ask for?
Absolutely.
That would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Janis, followed by Jim Bieber, followed by Jennifer Massey. That's the last card I have.
Before I start, I just got a text from my good friend Susan, and said I had to open with, "How about those Tritons?" So I have to say that for Susan. Rizzi came there tonight to personally thank Bob Baker for his eight years of service. Anytime we had called Bob or wrote an email, I think I wrote emails to the whole council about a year and a half ago. He was the first one to answer me, and it was greatly appreciated. And he was always there when we, to answer our questions or whatever we needed. So we really want to thank him for what he's done. We also want to congratulate Steve for getting elected, and Chris, and new mayor, and mayor pro tem, no doubt. Our whole country seems to be pretty polarized now, and after this last six months of campaigning and stuff, it was, no, it was a little, it was tough on us, but I think it was really tough on you guys that were running. And I couldn't imagine what you guys had to go through. So thank you for putting up with it. But as far as our nation being polarized, we'd like to see our city of San Clemente kind of unite and be one happy city again. But anyhow, thanks again, guys, and sure appreciate everything you do.
Next speaker, Jim Bieber, and Jennifer Massey's following. I don't see Jim Bieber, so Jennifer, you're up.
I'd like to add to the congratulations. Chris, Steve, you fought really hard. It's not easy, I know. But congratulations. And Bob, thank you again very much. I join all the people who respect the dedication and all your hard work for the city of San Clemente. Congratulations, Kathy and Tim. Look forward to a great year. I'm just, the last couple of, we don't have any heat in our house yet, because, well, first of all, born in the Depression, so we're very frugal. But also, then we discovered that our 50-year-old furnace had probably died. So we're getting a new one tomorrow. But I've been particularly aware of the dampness and the wind factor and the chill factor, and I am constantly worried about the homeless. Now, I know that a lot of them reject offers of assistance, but I would just actually like to know what the city is doing about any ones that might be willing to go into a shelter. Is there a place? And if it's not in San Clemente, is there a place in Santa Ana or somewhere, anywhere where these people can be in? Because I was at, one of these last couple of nights, I was really worried that people might not wake up in the morning. They actually die from the inclement weather. So I would just like to know if, and if you don't know yet right now, to tell me tonight, just if you can either email me, or maybe have it in the paper, or, I don't know how you can contact me, but I'd really like to know. I worry about these people, and I don't want to have to open up my house, because I can't take them all in, okay? Thank you so much. Have a great year.
Okay, Jim Bieber is back. So you'll be the last speaker, unless someone hands in the card.
My error, I have no public comments. I'll be speaking at the ethics hearing.
Okay, it said this item. I'm sorry.
Assuming you were speaking about the ethics hearing, so I raced in to make sure I made the cut, but.
Okay, I'll put it down for that item. Thank you.
Mayor, if it's okay, I think it would be good to get a report from OC sheriffs. Just an update, I know that Deputy Bull does a lot of homeless interaction and enforcement, and so at some point, maybe to have the chief to maybe bring back a report on, you know, homeless situation in San Clemente sometime in January, February, that it could brief the public on it, so that you can get some information out there to Ms. Massey and the public that would be interested in that item. I'm curious to hear about what efforts are being made and how that's being handled.
We can agendize that if there's no disagreement from the council for a special presentation at the January 17th meeting.
Actually, probably, maybe for the February meeting. I think January's going to be pretty packed, so.
Okay, so the first meeting in February.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Can you also add the armories and all the places that are open? I believe our police department offers that to people, and anyone that is homeless calls 211 and can find those out. So the cold weather armories are officially open.
Okay.
Thanks.
When are we going to, when is the Matrix study supposed to be, going to be actually wrapped up? What's the schedule on that?
For the police study?
Yeah.
That won't be landing until late February, early March.
Okay, because I would assume that it's also going to be covering how we're patrolling and taking care of our transient issues, too.
There'll be elements of that in the report.
So no more cards? I'll close the public hearing.
Could we have a motion waiving reading and full of all resolutions?
Second.
Motion by Han, second by Brown. All in favor? All opposed?
There was no closed session this evening. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion, unless council, staff, or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. The public has requested that item E be removed.
Does council have any items?
No. No. Allen, second.
Motion by Brown, second by Han. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed 4-0. Item E. And, hold on a second.
Hey. Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Congratulations.
Cards?
Cards.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, the public pulled the item.
Okay, oh, great, okay.
So, do, should we have a presentation by him first? Public first?
Say, we don't have any questions. Have them here from the public.
Okay. We do have cards on this. Lynn Hopper is the first speaker. Ellie Hammargan, Hemargren, I said that wrong, and Pete Van Nuys.
Did I just misunderstand you? Did you remove item E from tonight? I'm confused.
No, we pulled it so that you could speak on it.
We opened it up, the public.
Oh, so this is your chance.
Hi, I'm Lynn Mear Hopper, and I recognize some of you, and welcome, and some of you that are new, welcome. I'm looking forward to a great new year with y'all. I just want to support the fact that we do work on our sidewalks and our bike paths in town. I think the most crucial area is that northern route on PCH. There is no area against the cliff. There is that makeshift area along the cliff, but I think it should match what Dana Point and maybe Capo Beach did along, what is that? Along Poche, from Poche all the way down to Doheny. There's actually a designated bike path, which is two ways, so you can actually jog and bike. So that would probably be the most beneficial thing that we could put in, just for the safety of our community. I would not want to get in an accident with a car on a bike. I mean, if we're worried about cars going back and forth, I think you will live, maybe if you get in an accident. But if you hit somebody on a bike, I personally know people, their daughter, that actually struck somebody and killed somebody, and it's changed their lives. And I know it happens in cars, but I think the odds are a lot more on bicycles. So I think we should just match what Dana Point and Capo Beach did. Hi, Chris. That's about it. I think we need that. I know there's going to be more construction, of course, like there always is, but yeah, I think that'll benefit our community. So I definitely want to support it and push it through. Thank you.
Ellie?
Hi, everybody. Yeah, so I guess I'm a little confused, too. So this is, this is being approved, this bike project? Okay, so I want to thank you very much. Because I, I just want to, I keep going. Because I feel like San Clemente is being run over. You know, with the widening of the five, that's, you know, that's nothing we really have too much control over, I don't think. But, you know, I see so much traffic around the schools, you know, and with this new rule that a 16-year-old has to drive alone, which is good. We want our kids to stay alive, but it puts so many one people per car, and us adults are one person per car anyway. If we can get around San Clemente safely on bikes, I am so for it, because, you know, my daughters missed the opportunity to ride their bikes to Shorecliffs Middle School because it was too dangerous. And so maybe we can alleviate the traffic at Shorecliffs, because those parking lots are zoos, and to me, it's just such a waste of gas, such a congestion, you know, maker, these schools, because there's always just very few kids per cars. And yeah, thank you for doing that protected bike lane, because I would love to use it and ride up and down it, and yeah, not, not risk my life. And my daughters are now at San Clemente High School, and we only live like two and a half miles from San Clemente High School. They wanted to ride their bikes to the high school, and they can't even, you know, they're not drivers yet. Well, one is now, but they, because they don't know how a driver really acts, because one of them hasn't driven and one's a new driver, that I wouldn't trust them, you know, even crossing El Camino Real and going onto the freeway to San Clemente High School, because it's just too dangerous, too many cars. So if we can just keep moving on and, you know, getting, you know, keep researching bike paths like the one in the drainage, and, yeah, that's about it. I just don't want San Clemente to go the way of Newport Beach, just such a beautiful beach town, which has highways running through it. So thanks for listening, and thank you.
Good evening, council. Pete Van Nuys, San Clemente resident. Congratulations to all you election survivors. I want to speak, I want to speak in support of the North El Camino Real project. This project is going to complete the non-motorized connection between Dana Point Harbor, Doheny Beach State Park, North Beach, and our own beach trail. I don't think we realize the tremendous financial benefit that will be, that will befall us, especially North Beach. I think it's going to catalyze North Beach as a recreational destination. The word will go out through Southern California and probably worldwide that the trail is now complete between Dana Point Harbor and San Clemente. The amount of running pedestrian traffic we're going to see, I predict, is going to go up dramatically. Bicycle traffic, we're already getting a tremendous amount, probably the lion's share anyway. This project is going to add a segregated cycle track, as it's known, a Class IV facility for, next to the highway but separated. It's going to add a bike lane in each direction, which is beneficial, because it's going to decrease wrong-way bicycling, which is a tremendous contributor to car-bike collisions. It's going to reduce speeds overall, because the lanes are going to be narrower for automobiles, and there will be a center median, a solid center median out there. Concerns about head-on collisions, I think, are unfounded. All we have to do is look at what's happened in Dana Point, Capo Beach, where a substandard facility, but nevertheless, one that's similar to what we've done, was pushed out into the roadway. The lanes were brought together, and people wrung their hands and said, "Oh, we're going to have head-on collisions." I downloaded the Twitter's data tonight. There have been zero head-on collisions on that section, just for the record. So thanks a lot. I hope we approve this and move forward. And once again, Merry Christmas, guys.
Next speaker is Jennifer Massey, followed by Brenda Miller.
I'm very much in support of the project because of protection for families who are bicycling to the beach. It improves safety. It reduces pollution. Anytime we can get people walking, running, jogging, bicycling, particularly now that we have people on their cellphones, and they're texting, and now we've introduced marijuana. So, and add smokers of pot, or whatever they call it, and texting, and all that other fun stuff.
And they're going to be hungry. They're going to text, they're going to smoke, they're going to be hungry. It's a catastrophe. Perfect storm.
It's going to really be fun for those people.
Which is perfect for a North Beach food store.
Everyone's going to do tons of.
But I think, it's, I mean, it's, in my opinion, if they bang into each other in their cars, that's their fault. That's our problem. But I don't want to read in the newspaper about some child or somebody being run down on their bicycle or while they're jogging, okay? So we appreciate your help very much. Once again, thank you.
Hello, council members, and Mr. Schwartz, rookie councilman. Thank you for having the guts to run in this contested year. So just for the benefit of the public, I'd really like to reflect on how long it's been since this concept was put into motion. This coming spring, it will be seven years since staff and I conceived of the idea, and I assisted with writing, and I wrote my own from pedal, letters of support. I did a lot of research, traffic safety data research. And finally, it's here. And I am perhaps being presumptive if you do, in fact, agree to award this contract. I would really like to have a ribbon cutting when it's done. This is going to set the standard countywide. I hope every beach community in Orange County is jealous as hell. So they do what we've done. This is wonderful. The multimodality that that's going to promote, and the parking spaces that it will free up. This is a tremendous project. I have to commend our staff. I try not to brag about them too much in public, because I don't want anybody else to pay them half a million a year to leave here, but they're the best. Tom Frank, and Tom Bonnigut, and Bill Cameron, and Jennifer Rosales, and Jane as well. It's, it's a miracle, actually, because seven to 10 years ago, we were consistently told there's no way that roadway could be changed. And here we are. It's changed. OCTA has embraced it, made the exception to the master plan of arterial highways. There is enlightenment in the world, and there's reason to be positive, and this is one of them. I would like to just give you some quick data. Back in 2010, I organized an all-volunteer, and I think the only citywide bicycle and pedestrian count corridor by corridor ever done in this town. At PCH and Camino Cap on a weekend, 210 bikes and peds per hour, okay? On a weekday in the morning, that dropped to 37. Afternoon, it was 77. At PCH and Pico, on the weekend, it was 94 bikes and peds on a Sunday. On a weekday morning, between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m., it averaged 24 per hour. In the afternoon, it was 43 per hour. So Pete's not exaggerating when he says the numbers are going to be there. Hopefully, this will grow and be as congested with bicycles and pedestrians as the Tressels Access Trail is. And I had to have two counters there for each direction. It was an awesome task. So thank you. Thank you to Lori Doncheck, our staff. Again, I couldn't be, this is the best Christmas present I could ever have had. So thank you if that is, in fact, what you're going to do. Thanks.
Tom, can you come up?
You have questions?
You don't?
No.
You know, the only thing I would like you to do, because this is a project that came before us already, and has gone through the planning commission, could you just talk tonight a little bit about what you're asking us to approve tonight?
Oh, sure.
Or maybe a little bit about what the project is?
Okay.
Because there was some confusion on some of the speakers of what we're, what we're doing tonight.
Let me jump in and steal some of Tom's thunder here, because I know Tom and Tom did a fantastic job, and Brenda as well, but let me just say, what we're going to do compared to what Dana Point did, is we're going to blow them out of the water. Our project is absolutely fantastic, and that's not what Tom could have said, so I'm just going to say it for him.
That's right.
When this thing is done, it will be the culmination of probably one of the greatest multimodal projects to come to San Clemente. This, combined with the Vicero project we did, will enable people to ride from Forster Ranch to downtown to the beaches in a safe environment.
And Del Rio.
before us already and has gone through the Planning Commission, could you just talk tonight a little bit about what you're asking us to approve tonight? And, or maybe a little bit about what the project is? Because there was some confusion on some of the speakers of what we're, what we're doing tonight.
Let me jump in and steal some of Tom's thunder here, because I know Tom and Tom did a fantastic job and Brenda as well, but let me just say, what we're going to do compared to what Dana Point did is we're going to blow them out of the water. Our project is absolutely fantastic, and that's not what Tom could have said, so I'm just going to say it for him.
That's right.
When this thing is done, it will be the culmination of probably one of the greatest multimodal projects to come to San Clemente. This combined with the Vicaro project we did will enable people to ride from Forster Ranch to downtown to the beaches in a safe environment.
And Del Rio.
Yeah, and Del Rio, exactly. In a safe environment that they've never been able to do before. So this is tremendous. So with that, now you can highlight some of the cool parts of the project.
Well, that's a great summary, so thank you, Councilmember Ham. The only thing I'd add to that is we're also providing gateway treatments, so there'll be quite an aesthetic improvement to that corridor as well. So the particulars of the project are going to be travel lanes, one in each direction. But again, I'll remind you that the capacity of the roadway is really controlled by the intersections. So although there's that one segment between Camino San Clemente and Camino Capistrano that we're reducing from two lanes to one lane, there won't really be restriction in the vehicular capacity of that roadway. And in fact, by reducing the width of the pedestrian crossing distance at Camino Capistrano, I'm pretty confident we're actually going to get more green time on El Camino Real. So it should improve the efficiency for the vehicles on that road segment. In addition to the improvement for the vehicles and the safety improvement for the vehicles, we also, as Pete mentioned, we have six to seven and a half foot Class II bike lanes. And then we have a Class Foot, a Class I bicycle and pedestrian pathway, which ranges between 10 feet and, and eight feet at the most restricted point. But adjacent to that, we also have a five-foot space for pedestrians. So that's kind of the highlight. One thing that council didn't see the last time I was before you, which was about a year and a half ago, was the center medians, which were also out of the project. So while we're, you know, I pride myself on staying within budget, but while we're slightly over budget on this at this point, we did add a tremendous benefit to that roadway. And in addition to the increased aesthetic qualities that that brings, it also greatly increases the safety benefits for that portion of the roadway so that we don't get bicyclists crossing over to the other side of the street.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that, that the, when I went through this and looked at it, you know, I liked the way that the bulb out, but I think the, the center median really sets us apart. I think it's, it can alleviate some of those concerns. I get lots of emails on regarding to the opposing traffic being too close to each other. I think it gives a buffer to that as well as just an overall safety factor. So I think it was a great, great addition.
Oh, great. And thank you. Just to be clear though, so the public's clear, between Camino San Clemente and Avenida Estacion, there's medians on each of those intersections, but then it does go to a single double yellow. But in that single double yellow, there are 11-foot travel lanes, not 10-foot travel lanes. And we're also doing a center, a centerline rumble strip. And we don't have any of those in place. Well, we do actually have one in place, but it's on Camino Del Rio, which isn't open at this point. So you're going to get to experience that before you put on El Camino Real. Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll read it right here. I move that we approve the plans and specifications for North El Camino Real's street and sidewalk improvements and Class I bicycle and pedestrian path projects number 13308, 14325, and 163442. Approve and authorize Merit Execute Contract C62-77 by and between the City of San Clemente and GMC Engineering, Inc., providing the North El Camino Real's street and sidewalk improvements and Class I bicycle and pedestrian path in the amount of $1,904,969. Three, approve a supplemental appropriation of $86,000 in the gas tax under... Oh, undesignated, thank you. Fund balance to account 012-861-45300-00013308.
Motion by Han, second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
It passes 4-0 with Councilmember Doncheck absent.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the City Council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is to consider adopting city-initiated amendments to the Centennial General Plan, land use map, zoning ordinance, and zoning map.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. It's a request to adopt the amendments to the general plan, zoning ordinance, and land use maps. They're minor cleanup items that the Planning Commission recommends. They're timely to implement the general plan and review development while the city is continuing work on the City Council's prioritized work program to make the zoning ordinance specific plan consistent with the general plan that we're doing in phases. So these are minor clarification items. They address open space easements, the affordable housing overlay, some minor items with neon signs and retaining walls. And then there's also an infill development policy that the council directed staff to make some changes on. So rather than go into all those in detail, I'm open to answer any questions that you might have, but let me conclude by outlining the four actions that staff's asking the City Council to make. So Planning Commission's recommending that the City Council find that the project is exempt from further review under the California Environmental Quality Act to adopt a resolution for the general plan amendments, adopt the ordinance for the zoning ordinance and zoning map edits, and then direct staff to incorporate the amendments into the coastal land use plan for future consideration. That concludes my presentation.
I have just one question. Have we been receiving inquiries or concerns regarding the overlapping of, of the open space easements versus zoning? I mean, has this been an issue that's been building up, or is this just part of a cleanup process?
This is part of a cleanup process. It's like to, to get to the essence of this, when you, when you have open space easements, you have a surveyor that puts together a precise exhibit outlining the limits of that easement. And those are much more precise than a land use map. So this provides guidance when there's those differences between the easement and the land use map. No.
Okay, Joanne, do I have any cards? No, so I'll, we have one card. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. David Ochoa.
I'm David Ochoa. I represent the land at 1510 Avenue to De La Estrella. We have three businesses down there that are San Clemente resident, San Clemente businesses. And one of the things that's happening with this overlay is my property is three quarters, it's about three quarters of an acre, and it's three quarters designated heavy industry or heavy industrial, and one quarter light industrial. And so in this cleanup map, I would like to propose that we would take my property to all heavy industrial. It was that way when I purchased it, and it kind of got, somehow, I didn't realize that it happened, that it got this designation of half or one quarter light industrial, three quarters heavy industrial. So I've been talking to Chris about it, and I actually showed him the, the purchase agreement from the City of San Clemente in 1971 that showed it being a drainage easement and heavy industrial. So I'm just kind of, would rather have heavy industrial than light industrial. That's it.
Is it 1511?
1510.
1510.
It's where Frank's Auto, David Ochoa Installation, and Hench Manufacturing are all down there. Thank you.
Chris, can you just answer a question on that?
Yes, I...
This isn't part of the lots that, in a previous general plan amendment, we changed some of the zoning on, on, he said De La Estrella, so it's not on El Camino at all, this lot?
No. I have an exhibit right here that helps explain this a little bit. The lot, Mr. Ochoa's lot, is this area here, and it wraps around like this. So I have the green outline to show the entire area that's part of this cleanup, okay? Because there's two cleanups in this little area. But Mr. Ochoa's lot wraps around like this. And so the cleanup item that's proposed tonight is this light shaded purple area. If you, so this is an excerpt from the 1991 general plan map. And this has been, this limitation here, you're going to find, it's, it is unusual. It's split zoning, where you have an heavy industrial zone that splits right here, and here's the lot line, and then you have this light industrial designation here. So you have two designations on Mr. Ochoa's property and the property next to it. And that's been in effect for at least two decades. So if you go to the 2014 general plan update, there was consideration, we had focus group meetings, we had public outreach, and there was an effort to clean up parcels. And I recall that we, we made a decision to continue this split zoning due to the, the nature of the area. There's some complexities with the residential near the industrial. And rather than intensify by changing this light industrial area, there was a decision to keep the land uses as is. And if you keep going, that's also reflected in the current specific plan map with the line here. Here's the property line that wraps around. And then in 2015, if you recall, you got 250 pages of map books that I presented to the council.
Still in my closet.
And you missed it. There'll be opportunities coming up. So, so what happened was naturally, a computer program wants to assign one value or another to a shape when you do maps. And so it was an oversight. You're going to see that that split there is, is no longer on the land use map. So what we're proposing is to go back to what's been in effect for at least two decades. Mr. Ochoa is asking the council to actually change the land use from what was there previously, which we did not review. When we came to the council in 2015, there was no environmental review or City Council direction to make any land use changes here. It was just an unintended mapping error that we're proposing to clean up as part of this.
Okay, so to clarify, that, that change that he is requesting is in this cleanup?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. Sounded like what you said.
So we're restoring it back to the 19, to the, to the 1991 general plan maps that we had?
Yes.
From what the previous general plan amendment, excuse me, from the new general plan changed all to heavy industrial.
So you're restoring it to the 2014 general plan and everything prior?
And prior. Can I see the, can you roll it down to what, the new, excuse me, down to the third map there?
See, there's all dark purple here.
And the concern is, is that with that designation, that he'll convert the area to heavy industrial and we'll just get a different use there that's more impactful or intense on the area?
Yeah, heavy industrial allows two uses that the light industrial does not. Concrete batch plants with a conditional use permit and auto towing yards with a conditional use permit. And it also allows increased density. So it would be an intensification of density to change this little piece here. Now, there, I need to, I know this is all confusing, so...
It's pretty clear. You're doing a good job.
Well, basically, we're trying to go back to how things have been. And Mr. Ochoa wants to change it all to what was an unintended change. No, it's all shown this way.
Yeah, but basically, if we want to understand, the, the two primary things that could go on there, that we probably wouldn't want to go on there, still require a conditional use permit.
Yes.
Before they could be done, right?
That's right.
Okay.
But when, when intensifying the land use, per the Environmental Quality Act, you have to review like noise and other factors that go into that, and that hasn't been done. That was, wasn't even thought of before.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I'm not really comfortable making this change at this time, but if, Chris, if you're comfortable with it, can we segregate this out from the rest of the recommended changes tonight and then bring this back at a later time? It's near the beginning of next year, and we can actually discuss it, and we'll have a better understanding of what's going on.
What I, what I recommend is that the council clean up the general plan according to what the public noticing was.
Okay.
And the intent, the, the policy intent has been to date. And if the council wants to direct staff to look into this issue, when we do the specific plan update for the West, West Pico Corridor Civic Plan, then we could look at issues like the, the land use impacts and whatnot. And then if there's merit in making a change, then we can bring it before the council that time. That's, that's our recommendation.
When's the specific plan coming back to us?
We're trying to get it to you next year.
Yeah, one of the problems I have is, is when we have a, one piece of property that has two zones on it, it, you know, that, then it affects the, you know, landowners, and that's something we shouldn't be doing. So that's why, yeah, whatever we do, I would like it to come back to us.
Okay.
So that we can look into it more deeply.
I, I think, I think I can accept your recommendation as long as we have a note to recontemplate this. Even if it has been in place for 20 years, it is odd to have it split into two separate uses. And so, and primarily, if, in relooking at it, if the impacts of heavy industrial use can be mitigated either through the CUP, you know, the conditional use process or some other way, that we have other triggers, we can really look at it deeply, then there's, there's still ways that we can, you know, work on that. So I'm fine with staff recommendation, I'm fine with passing this as is tonight, but we'd like to look at Mr. Ochoa's situation in depth when we do the specific plan and really reconcile what his needs are with what we're looking to do, because I think that there's a way of finding a middle ground that works for him and for us.
Understood. I will make a note that I spent time talking to Mr. Ochoa on the phone and reviewed what he's using the property for. And the current, you know, with the cleanup, it doesn't create any problems for him, and it's existing operations and plans.
Great. So, thank you. Somebody want to make a...
Is that okay? Pick it up next year.
I think, what I, I believe is that when I got designated...
Oh, yeah.
When I got designated, two different ways. Just wait, just speaking of the mic, you don't want to... What I, what I believe is that there was a mistake made before the 1994 map, because when we purchased the property in 1971 from the City of San Clemente, I have a map that shows it all heavy industrial with one drainage easement. And so now, that's why I'm kind of confused, why do I have light and heavy? So I just gave Chris that information this afternoon, so he hasn't even had a chance to see, to go back to 1971.
So I think what we're proposing is just to revisit this item?
I'm fine with it.
Next year.
Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
You want to do it? Okay. All right, fine. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Planning Commission recommendation. One, find that the project is exempt from a further review of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, beyond the final environmental impact report, EIR, State Clearinghouse Number 2013041021, certificated Centennial General Plan of February 13, 2014 pursuant to California Public Resources Code 21083.3. Number two, adopt resolution number 16-75 entitled Resolution, City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, adopting general plan amendment 16-374 and general land use plan, excuse me, general plan land use map amendments to clarify policy intent by fixing errors, clarifying, reversing unintended changes made previously and adding standards to provide guidance on open space easements. Number three, introduce ordinance number 1638 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, adopting zoning amendment 16-375, amending Title 17 of the San Clemente Municipal Code and the zoning map to clarify policy intent by fixing errors, clarifying, reversing unintended changes made previously, and adding standards to provide guidance on open space easements. Four, direct staff to incorporate general plan amendments into the coastal land use plan for further consideration. And then additionally, to revisit Mr. Ochoa's property during the specific plan deliberations, whenever that comes up this next year regarding his zoning, his zoning issues.
Motion by Brown, second by Schwartz. All in favor? It passes 4-0 with Councilmember Doncheck absent.
Next is a public hearing to consider the City of San Clemente Annual Mitigation Fee Act Report for fiscal year 2016.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Tom Rendina. I am the Business Services Officer. Before you tonight is the annual report concerning the Mitigation Fee Act of fiscal year 2016. The report is submitted once a year based on activity in fiscal year 2016, which ended June 30th. It is essentially a recap of the activities related to all the mitigation fees collected on behalf of the city in the last year. It was noticed to the public on December 5th, made available at the city clerk's office, and published to interested parties who had expressed interest previously in receiving the report. So at that, with that said, it's just open to any questions perhaps that anyone has.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I understand that the beach parking impact fee is in, is among this. I thought that I would find out where we are as far as the refunding of that fee. But do we know?
So we're in the process of preparing the refund, mostly...
Most likely, we'll have a closed session item at the January meeting to update the council at that time as to the status.
Does anyone have any questions on Mr. Rendina? Nope. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Joanne, do we have any cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so no cards, I will close the public hearing.
Okay, I move that we receive and file an annual report concerning mitigation fee act for fiscal year 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ham, second by Schwartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0 with Councilmember Doncic absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Public Works Director, City Engineer, concerning the selection of the theme and colors for the San Clemente trolley.
Good evening, Mayor Ward and council members. Tom Bonnigat, Deputy Public Works Director. I know you all read my brief report, so with that, I'm here to answer any questions about the request we're making of you tonight.
Go ahead. Councilmember Schwartz.
I just wanted to bring up that I'm kind of pleased, finally. It's, it's, it's almost serendipitous that I put up a concept of a trolley back when I was chairing the Parks and Rec Commission, and all these years later, my first time on the dais here, and you're bringing up the review of what colors, we're actually going to do one. So I just, I'm just grateful for it. I read your report, it's very good. And if possible, I would like to be part of the group that, that reviews it.
I don't have any questions.
I was going to volunteer as well.
Any problem with that?
No.
Okay, so council members, Ham and Schwartz will be on the committee to decide, they're selected to be on the ad hoc committee to decide the potential themes and colors for the San Clemente trolley. I can't wait to see what the themes are. Looking forward to that.
There's only one theme.
And what would that be?
Tritons.
Ooh.
I always think that a certain word would be Triton.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so do we need a motion on that, Joanne?
You don't have to.
Okay.
And, and so if I may add, for members Ham and Schwartz, what we are looking, my staff will coordinate with the city manager's office to get with you on schedules, but we are anticipating trying to meet with the consultant either January 3rd or 4th in the afternoon. They'll of course work that out to make sure it works with your schedules, because we are going to try very hard to get to your council meeting on January 17th for a formal final approval. So, okay. And I'll make sure my staff coordinates that with the city manager, but thank you for the heads up.
Thank you, Tom.
Great, thanks.
The next item is report from the city clerk concerning an alleged violation of city code of ethics policy 1202-1. On December 15th, a member of the public provided my office with a written complaint that alleged that the city manager violated the code of ethics policy. And that report is in your, your book. The city manager had previously indicated that he would be unable to attend this meeting, but I was involved in this, so I'd be happy to review it or answer any questions. I think I could probably answer most of your questions. And we have a card on this, too.
Yes, we do. So, Mr. Bieber? Oh, there's a second card?
He, it.
Same card.
Well, it's a same one.
Thank you.
Can someone explain what the ethical violation was alleged? We don't know anything about what you've been alleging.
Mr. Bieber, will you come up to the podium?
Could you please explain before I do what we're talking about?
I think it was read in. We're perfectly aware of exactly what the ethical violation is, so if you'd like to chat.
The public isn't, the public's not, we have no idea what we're voting on.
You can read the agenda. If there's no one to speak on this item, I can make a motion.
Yeah.
For people following at home, they might be wondering what we're voting on. It's pretty clear, there's a letter on city letterhead from the city manager that is illegal to do. It's set into motion, the register of voters by law scheduling a recount to occur. When criminals get caught doing something, they lie, lie, then they deny, and then they blame others. It's pretty, pretty straight up, clear, it was broken, the ethics were broken with this letter. And what transpired during the last council meeting is three of you voted to spend taxpayer money to fund a recount at the register of voters' office, which was illegal. Councilman Ron Burgundy took pause to stop reminding San Clemente to be classy and said, dude, listen, hey, I'm a gambling man. The percentage of nine votes are going to be different. I say it's worth a shot. Well, Tim Brown was a little bit more serious, because he took the time to lie very specifically saying that this money was going to be allotted and was designated for public safety, all the money that we were going to lose by this initiative not passing. In fact, he actively campaigned against it. Every opportunity that they had, he reminded voters that we were in sound financial shape, that we were bond rated, we had millions in reserves, there was no need to panic or worry, we were fiscally sound. So what should have happened is you guys should have passed the hat around like every other legitimate, honest politician and funded the recount privately. But instead, you dipped into the city coffers to do this. Now, what's so funny about this is it was only in July where you had the benefit of city attorney standing where I am right now, that walked you through the exact laws that you decided to violate at the last meeting. Any officer, consultant, you folks violated the rules. You knew exactly what you were doing. And in fact, so specifically, Councilman Brown asked a follow-up question to the city attorney, who we pay handsomely. And you asked him, can we, what can we do?
Is intended to reiterate and codify locally those principles? You would have to do something more overt to, to violate these provisions of law. You would have to take a step to order or, or implement the use of city resources for an advocacy role.
Which is exactly what you folks did. Now, the board of supervisors asked the registrar of voters, Neil Kelly, to itemize the cost that you folks made him incur, taxpayers incur by violating the law. Your attorney has said that individuals will be held responsible, either criminally or civilly, to pay back the taxpayer for money that they wasted. Tim, are you voluntarily going to abide by the law and return and pay the Orange County taxpayers back the money that you made them waste? Will you have to wait for a letter from the board of supervisors to do this, or will you do it voluntarily? Councilman Brown, would you care to answer the question? Councilman?
Thanks, Jim.
You're not going to answer the question?
See you later.
Is there any other speaker cards?
Always a pleasure, Jim.
One more speaker card. Mr. Malamute?
I was out of town, I didn't know about this item until just before the meeting. And I was serious, I don't know what this ethics violation, I don't even know who it's against, and I don't know why it's going forward. If it has to do with the recount, again, I think that this council shouldn't vote on anything tonight, they should find out what happened. I don't think ethics violations are productive for our town. I don't think there's anybody in this town that's not trying to do the best for the town. And others, I mean, in council, it's not trying to do the best for the state. We may disagree on, on what happened, but I think the solution to that is to find out what happened, and if it's not right, don't do it in the future. But I don't think that there's any way this council tonight, unless they know something, I don't know, like I said, I don't even know who this is against. But I think that the better thing to do is find out what happened, and to make sure if it, if it's not, as we say kosher, that it doesn't happen again. And, and my concern with respect to this is not how anybody voted a few weeks ago. My concern is that somehow it appears that council was able to vote on an action that they had no right to take. But I don't even know if that's the case, because in all my emails, and I have a bunch of them with the city manager, they, I was told that there would be a tire explanation tonight of what happened. Is that going to happen tonight? Because I was told if we came to this meeting, we would hear what happened. If it does, I think that would be good. If it's not going to happen, then when is it going to happen? And I would ask that, that nobody votes for an ethics violation tonight, but that we find out what did happen. Thank you so much.
Can I just clarify with the council? All that we just heard, this violation's.
Can you close the public hearing first?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Proten. Appreciate that. Close public hearing.
I've got a request, if I don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Eric, could you mind just briefing the council very quickly on, you know, just a brief summary on exactly what happened with the recount? And we can, you know, elaborate further from there.
Absolutely. I'll probably look to have Joanne and Scott chime in at certain points in the brief summary. So at the last council meeting.
This is Brad, just to, you know, this is, I thought it'd be appropriate earlier, but this seems to come up now, so it'd be great here.
At the last council meeting, the council gave the direction for the staff to seek a recount with the Orange County Register of Voters. We had time constraints with regards to election law, as to how quickly we had to respond to the register of voters to initiate a recount. I'll look to Scott really quick to talk about how we agendize that for that council meeting as an emergency item. Scott, if you want to touch on that really quick, please.
Yeah, the Brown Act allows the city council to add late-breaking items to its agenda. The council can do that with a four-fifths vote. If it finds that the need to take action arose after the published, publication of the agenda, and if it can't wait until the, the next council meeting, that's, the act says that it requires immediate action, and the, the prevailing view, the view of the League of California City Attorney's Department, is that immediate action means it has to be acted upon before the council's next meeting. So the council made both those findings explicitly in adding that to the meeting. It found that the results had come in, I think, only 90 minutes before your meeting, long after the publication of the agenda the week before, and that the deadline to act was also long before the council was going to meet again tonight. And so that's how it was added to the agenda.
Thank you. So with that, council gave staff direction, and at that point, once the action had been formalized by the council, our city clerk, Joanne, began to work with the register of voters to understand the process of submitting that request. It's at that point in time when the register of voters made it clear that it couldn't be an entity requesting a recount, it had to be a registered voter. And so that was the first issue that we had to deal with in terms of a registered voter making the request. With multiple back and forth with the register of voters, there was a determination or a thought of, well, that person could be the city manager, James Maxine Ash. If you would pull up the, Mr. Bieber's PowerPoint with the letter that we have, that would be helpful for this as well. Thank you. So if you go to the top of this, so this, this right here, this letter, as you can tell, it's not signed, there was no executive.
By the way, I just want to make a point, that that date is not the date the letter was done.
It's an auto-date function that just pops up every time the document's printed, correct? Thank you for that clarification. This was a draft letter that the city clerk drafted and submitted to Neil, saying if we were to do something in terms of a registered voter submitting the request, would this format be allowable? And the answer was yes. However, at the point of financial obligations to the cost of the recount being specifically on the individual who's requesting the recount, in this case hypothetically the city manager, there was concerns of financial responsibility in that case. And so with it being very contested, there was a decision made by the city manager in conjunction with the city clerk and Scott Smith not to proceed with this and to come back and let the council know of our actions. And a really good example that I like to use, it's really simple, is, is every other Tuesday night when we have a council meeting, staff authorizes the city manager to execute contracts. And so I always use, use this example, because you exercise, you provide that authority to the city manager to execute a contract, but if there's a clause in the contract that is illegal, or if there is a conflict in the contract, we're not going to proceed with that. We're going to obviously step back and make sure that what we're doing is completely in the best interests of the city. And so in this particular case, there was a step back, and we decided that it wasn't worth the issue of going forward with the recount. Or illegal. And so that, I think, kind of puts it together in a Reader's Digest version.
And, and to be extremely clear, exactly, as I received the call from the city attorney, they briefed exactly what was going to happen, and at the next council meeting, they would be briefing the council. Is exactly what transpired. No decision, they just will bring in an update to the council, it's exactly what happened. So as I said, I look forward to the information when it's provided to us, it's exactly what happened. So no decisions, but ultimately, if you can't proceed, you can't proceed.
Understood.
And I would just like to add that when I did this draft, this is standard procedure for me with regard to the, the registrar of voters, because, you know, our deadline was Sunday, the following Sunday at 5:00. When you're sending something, something to the registrar of voters, you have to be sure that it's exactly what they need. That's why I was going back and forth with the registrar, just what if the city manager, city manager had not even seen this letter. I wrote this letter. And it was just like I do with council, when I send them resolutions before I write a report that give you options. Those have already been vetted. I've showed them to the city attorney, I've showed them to the registrar of voters, just to make sure that when I'm giving them to you, if you choose to adopt it, it's the vehicle that you need to do that. And I would also add, the complainant indicated that this letter is what triggered work on the part of the registrar of voters. That is not accurate. This letter was done on December 8th, this draft, December 7th, which was the day after council took action. I sent a courtesy email to the registrar of voters that morning, saying, Neil, I want you to know council voted to pursue a recount. I received an email from him that afternoon, saying that they had already started the prep work. So that's what triggered, it, it was nothing to do with this draft. He knew it was a draft.
So before we proceed, though, I'd just like to, to make a few comments. I'm going to be addressing our ethics policy later on, but, you know, we've been subjected to, in I don't know how many years we've had the ethics policy, we haven't received any ethics complaints prior to this year and in this year alone. I think we're on number five, Joanne, is that right?
I think it's four.
Four?
Four in the last six months, I believe.
Four in six months, and all seemed to originate it from a single source. And so I think it's worth, I think it's worth acknowledging the letter, and I'd like to read this in public record, because I think it's important for the public to know exactly what happens behind the scenes and the type of, I would say, abuse that we're subject to with these ethics complaints. And here's the, the email that came with the PowerPoint that was attached for oral comments under 9B. Dear Mrs. Campanolo, it was written in Alora. Attached, you find a PowerPoint I wish to use during the agendized item of this ethics hearing. On a side note, I feel bad that ever since I made a comment about Kathy's oversized costume jewelry, that her signature recognizable look during public comments, she has foregone wearing them. It was only passing reference, I defiantly think that wearing them was a net plus, as the big jewelry balanced out her hairstyle. I personally love big 80s hair, and always thought Linda Evans had a very attractive look on Dynasty. Every hot music video of the 80s had women with large hair that looked like a lion's mane. It was bold and sexy. And big 80s hair is practical, as it gives symmetry and balances out women with large I'll read that again. And big 80s hair is practical, as it gives symmetry and balances out women with large hips. This is the quality of the political discourse we enjoy with the complainant. I think that's my comment, that's not in the letter, because that's actually somewhat cogent and relevant. I think it is best that I do not mention any fashion observations of any kind during my comments moving forward. During his public comments, he also, let's see here, I'm sorry, called me, what was it? Oh, a liar, called Councilman Ham Ron Burgundy, and then said that we had lied about designating these funds for public safety, even though that was in the ballot argument. My only comment is, the only person in this chamber that has been cited for ethical violations and paid those fines is the complainant at any point. And so we're going to continue to receive these ethical violations and these ethical allegations, we'll handle them. But I'll be damned if I'm going to sit here and take this kind of abuse. We are a serious town, working seriously to do the best we can to voters, making $400 a month, and doing it happily, because it's good for the city of San Clemente. We don't need it, it's not welcome. We deserve better, our residents deserve better. And with that, I'd like to dismiss this item. I was going to make a motion.
Can I make a comment?
We can discuss. Okay, go ahead.
No, I, I just wanted to say that I attended the meeting that this went through. I understood the timeframe. It was very well explained at that meeting what the timeframe was, and then why it was agendized for that meeting. I've dealt with the Brown Act and meetings and running meetings for 20 years, and it was appropriate in my thoughts and mind. I was unclear, the only thing I was unclear about was the fact that the city had no standing in being able to make that. And I think the staff took the right approach. When they was determined, they discovered that the city had no standing, they really didn't have authority to spend public funds for a private individual to do anything. And the timeframe just didn't allow for that to occur. So, that's all I wanted to add to it.
Okay. I move that we direct city clerk to dismiss the complaint and notify the complainant and the persons named in the complaint of that action.
Motion by Ham, second by Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Lori, Councilmember Doncheck absent.
I will ask city staff if they wouldn't mind rounding up on this item, at least in the minutes that's been, are going to be written for this meeting, that for the double-out recount, that we have a blurb encapsulating our conversation, so we have a written record as to why the recount never went through, something that folks can reference, because we need to tie off on it, and I think the meeting minutes would probably be the best way to do that.
We'll put something together and get it on our front page website under latest news with all that information.
Thank you.
So, we are at the oral communications, part two? Open the public hearing. We have one card. Mr. Malamud.
Thank you, Councilman Brown, for asking that we get a clarification of this item. I appreciate that. I also think that we should stop. There's no way to do it, but ethics violations are the wrong way to go in this town. I think the whole idea of doing it does not add to the discourse in this town, I agree with you on that. I haven't seen any ethics violations. I've seen people take wrong steps, but what troubles me on this item was that unless I misunderstood Eric, and I don't think I did, that city attorney and the city manager, and I assume Eric, found that there was nothing illegal about the conduct at this place, but that the action was terminated because it was illegal. Those two don't make sense to me. The other thing that doesn't make sense to me is that under what authority, once the council made that decision, that can be overruled by somebody, and I'm not sure whether it was Eric, the city manager, or the city attorney. And I sent an email to everybody, I think it went to the city attorney, but I'm not sure, that what they should do on Friday was have noticed a special meeting for Monday, and had council overturn their own decision. I think it's scary if staff can overturn the council's decisions. And I think his example was a good example of the contract, but that's kind of, you know, he's given example, Eric did, and it was a good example of an illegal contract. I don't think anybody should pursue that, but-
Mayor, so I didn't want to interrupt, but this is about an item that you already discussed, not something not on the agenda, so I don't know if you can-
But we weren't told about any of those issues, and I didn't know about it, nobody did, and I, okay, I mean-
It was published with the agenda-
I'm not, I'm not objecting to what happened.
But you can't talk twice about an item that's over.
Okay.
And so, I just, it's the mayor's call, but the Brown-
Fair enough. And I'm not trying to violate the rules either. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, and I think it was explained in the record of what happened.
I think so. It's been on your agenda twice tonight, so it can't be part of the public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Yes, under item 11A1, Human Affairs Committee and Golf Course Committee vacancies, we received two resignations from the Human Affairs Committee, one from Nancy Sutherland, another one from Patricia Drown. Both of their terms were due to expire in June of 2017. We also received a resignation from Kevin Kellerman from the Golf Course Committee. His term was due to expire June of 2018. I talked to the Golf Course Manager, and he said that if you don't want to fill that position, if you want to wait until the annual appointments in June, he's okay with that. The Human Affairs Committee, Amber Gregg, said that she would prefer to get those filled, because with two empty slots, it's a little hard to get a quorum. So, it's up to you. If you want to direct me to advertise the openings and schedule a meeting day to interview for one or both of those, we could do that now, or we could just defer the whole thing till June.
I say we-
Well, on this one here, taking the direction of staff, I think that, first of all, all three of these folks were amazing volunteers. They were exceptional, and so, I think it's worth having them here, presenting a plaque. I'm sure that's going to be part of our process. But I do think that out of five members on the Human Affairs Committee, we lost two. That is challenging to have a quorum and to operate. The Golf Course Committee can muscle along, they have a whole bunch of other members in there, so I could see us filling the Human Affairs Committee and focusing on that.
There are seven, there are human affairs.
Is there seven?
There's seven.
Yeah.
Now, there are five, but it's still tricky.
Two, three, four. Oh, you're right, we're doing, right, we're doing, I apologize about that. So, yeah, I guess we could fill both, yeah, and be able to say.
Yeah, I would agree. And also, we're going to be looking at who's going to be liaising with each of the committees, and maybe so we could give that some time, too.
Can I suggest, though, if the council would like, that we had a lot of qualified people that applied for human affairs, and we could not pick them all? So, could we direct the city clerk to reach out to those people, that these openings, can, if they say so, can their application be automatically included, or do they have to fill it out again?
If they tell me that they're good with it, I'll just use the old one, but I do need to, according to the Matty Act, invite more people as well.
So, is the process about the same? If we have the hearing, we're going to, might as well, if we're filling two, would it be just as easy to fill a third for the Golf Course Committee? What's your, what's your take on that?
I would say yes. If you're having a meeting, you might as well.
Then let's, let's accept, so-
So, we need to come up with a date?
Just fill them all. If we're having the hearings, if it's going to happen anyway, then we might as well fill all three positions.
June. But Joanne, you're asking us to come up with a date that we all can come?
Yes, and make it after about January 17th, to give me time to advertise.
Oh, gee, really?
So, just some, yes, some available dates, let's see. Chambers is available, January 23rd, 25th, 26th.
That's fine with me. So, the 25th?
And what time works for you?
Don't we try to do them where people can get here from work, or?
5:00? Or what, would you do anything?
It's pretty early if they're working.
6:00? Okay.
6:00 tomorrow. Okay, I'll get you sandwiches. Bribery. Okay, so January 25th at 6:00. Hey, whatever. Yeah. Okay, great. Veronica will, I'll talk to her.
And next item?
And then, the next item is the update to council appointees to regional committees, commissions, and boards. Councilmember Doncheck had indicated that she would like to be here for that, if you want to defer it. Otherwise, I believe she gave Assistant City Manager, signed her preferences for appointments.
Is she with the wish list?
I'm okay with hearing the wish list. I'm just getting it done.
Tim, what do you think?
Is there any changes?
I say we proceed.
Proceed?
I say we proceed.
No, from her wish list, yeah.
So, with regards to Councilmember Doncheck, she had provided me with some notes with regards to preferences for the appointments for 2017. She wanted to express her willingness to continue with SCAG, but also communicated that if Tim wants to go back to that, which was something that I believe Tim had been involved with in the past, that was, that was fine, willing to add as an alternate to the CEP and the economic development, and her wish would be to continue with the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, the Library Liaison, and the Social Service slash Community Service Budget Committee. And then, there was also the discussion of sunsetting the Safety Quiet Zone Committee, and I think the Mobility Task Force Committee has already begun the sunset process. And she has time conflicts with TCA, OCFA, Investment Advisory, Chamber of Commerce and Water Agency, and she wanted me to voice recommending the discontinuing of the Coastal Coalition and the Bicycle Committee.
I'm good with all those. I was going to ask if Lori wanted to step up on the TCA with her vast experience with OCTA, I thought she'd be a good addition there. She's kind of a powerhouse, and being that we have some discontent going on at TCA, I think she'd be a good addition. So, maybe we hold off on that one?
Yeah, because of her time conflicts. I can't speak to her specific time conflicts, but it's in her category of time conflicts.
Can you mention to her that TCA is only, has joined boards, and the meeting is at 9:30, the second Thursday?
I can, I can definitely let her know, but it would probably be something that we would have to address at the next meeting.
If we defer, we could discuss it then. Cool. So, let's just, we'll do it one by one, from the top to the bottom, like we normally do?
So, Bicycle Committee, are we in agreement to sunset that?
I am.
Yeah, me, too.
Bicycle Committee is out. Liaison for Capistrano Unified, Baker was on that with you. Do you wish to continue?
I would be happy to continue in that role, and I wouldn't mind having an alternate.
I think, I think Lori would be a great alternate, just because of her experience with school districts.
Yeah, she's a school teacher. So, we'll recommend?
So, let's bring that back for her to, in that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
The Chamber of Commerce position, I'm going to ask that we bring back the DBA as well, and we do that one, one seat for both those, and I'd like to step up and do both those.
Well, as a, yeah, as a member of the Chamber and as a, as a local businessman, you know, I just thought I would be a good fit, because I'm involved with a lot of the issues that they're involved with.
Well, I want to do this one for a while now, so maybe we can do it next year, but I'd really like to take over for this one.
Well, maybe what we could do is have Ham as the designate with, we have any council may serve as an alternate, but maybe Steve is, is an alternate.
That'd be great.
There you go.
And then-
So, this is the Chamber and the DBA?
This is Chamber, DBA.
And can I suggest that the mayor still attend the ribbon cuttings?
Don't worry, you get to keep all those. Yeah, I'm not trying to jump on your parade with that one.
Who's doing what for the Chamber?
Yeah, no, you get to, you get to cut all the ribbons you want.
Thank you.
For the next one, as, as an owner of two dogs, and one of them is a rescue dog, I would like to step up and take over the coastal animal services.
This is, this is actually a good one, Steve, I think, for you to step up into. Unfortunately, right now, we're in transition phase with Scott leaving, so I'm comfortable, and I don't know if we can do this, Joanne, maybe I can be for the first six months with Steve as alternate.
Well, if you move me, if you move me in as the alternate, and then, and then you could just resign after sort of six months.
Let's do that. That works great.
Great. Coastal Coalition, is this the one that we talked about, sunsetting?
Well, yeah, there's, it's not to be confused with the more recent-
Community Concerned-
Yeah, Community Concerned Coalition, it's the older one, correct.
I'm, I'm okay getting rid of that one.
No issues there.
Doesn't it say in our general plan, no offshore rigs, Chris? Doesn't it? Doesn't it say something about that? I thought it did.
It's, it's, it's footnoted in there, but I can't remember what the exact term was. But we do, we're not supportive of them, that's for sure. Yeah.
Okay, the Conservancy.
You know, I've been the representative here. Frankly, it's been fairly inactive for the past year. I don't know if that's because of my behastre, just having the meetings, but I'd be happy to transition that to someone who's a little more passionate about it than I am.
I'm excited for this one, too.
You want this one?
Yeah, I do.
My friend, it's all yours.
Okay, perfect. Steve, give it up?
Economic Development?
As, as somebody that's been involved with financials, finances, and financial analysis for 40 years, I would like to be possibly part of this.
I was going to recommend that we abolish it, but on that note, I was going to recommend you for the Investment Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I already have that down, too.
So.
The economic? We haven't even had a-
Is this one of the ones that Lori was recommending to sunset, or no?
No, she was only recommending the Coastal Coalition and the Bicycle.
It's a funny thing, because what happens with the economic development position is, generally speaking, it's, the way that it was, has worked in the past is like a business interesting town, they want to meet with the mayor, and so, it's like a ceremonial type of thing. It's always been more along the lines of being welcoming to businesses. Frankly, a lot of this role is filled by the Chamber and the DBA rep, where they're welcoming businesses and ribbon cuttings and things like that, so, I, you know, I, let me put it this way, we've been in that position, we've been in this for the past year, and there hasn't been a single meeting or anything that's been initiated from it, and so, it's a fairly empty role in that regard?
But what I would like to ask possibly is, you know, give me a shot at it, maybe I can generate some interest, and we can maybe have some positive movement towards economic development that we just haven't had.
The only concern with, that I have with that, Steve, is we wrote in the general plan that we're not going to be spending any public funds on economic development. If that's something that the Chamber wants to take on and expend their own funds on, they can do that, so, you know, it might be unfruitful. And to Tim's point, as the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, anytime anybody comes to town, that's the first person they call. But with that said, I don't want to let you forget that you can get to come to all ribbon cuttings, too. Everybody's invited to ribbon cutting, so don't think Kathy owns them just because you-
Well, let's, let's do this. So, right now, there's no committee to do this, but I would, I would prefer that we lump in economic development with the Chamber and the DBA comment. Is there, maybe we could change the title of that to, you know, we have Chamber of Commerce or DBA Representative, I think economic development should be just lumped in with that. Frankly, it should be all the same thing. So, maybe what we should do is call that the Economic Development Representative, and then have Chamber and DBA underneath it.
Underneath. That's a great idea.
Fair enough, and then you will have, be free to do what you need to do, and we could also liaise with the business groups from there.
Okay, sounds good.
So, emergency operational area council.
I see no-
Oh, that's Mary's, I'm sorry. I didn't look to the right. So, the fire authority, we need to discuss that, because-
I'm, I'm interested in that. I'm particularly interested in that one. Can I, can I do that one? You okay with that, Kathy?
Yep. And there's no alternates on that anymore?
No.
So, we don't have to do that? Okay, and we'll have to make a motion, right, Joanne, for him to, at the end?
Exactly.
Do you want us to make it now, or at the end?
Whatever is your pleasure.
Let's just do it now. I move that we appoint Mayor Pro Tem, Tim Brown, to the Orange County Fire Authority Board.
Second.
Do we need a vote on that? All in favor? Passes 4-0?
Do I have to recuse myself?
You do need to read that resolution title.
I thought there was some more to it.
Okay.
Okay, so, I move that we, let's see, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 1676, entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Designating and Appointing, it's Appointing Mayor Pro Tem, Tim Brown, as our representative to the Orange County Fire Authority's Board of Directors.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ham, second by Schwartz, all in favor? Passes 4-0. Councilmember Doncheck absent.
And I can vote on that as the member, or no?
Yeah, you can. It's, it's, it's not a source of, yeah. The FPBC's issued a ruling that you can.
Next one is JPIA, and Lori has expressed interest in that. Do you still want to be the alternate?
Actually, I, my insurance experience is extremely limited, however, I believe that your insurance experience is extremely generous, so I'd love if you would step up to be the alternate there.
Sure, although I do know, I do know that the council, that they can have unlimited alternates anyway.
That's true, but generally speaking, she liaises with me and asks me to sub for
Okay, Investment Advisory Committee, are we in agreement that, uh, Steve would head that up?
Yes.
Okay, great. Legislative Delegate, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, the Library Task Force...
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
No, 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 sorry. Library Task Force, uh, Councilmember Doncic is on that. She didn't, she expressed an interest in staying with that, didn't she?
Staying with the Library Liaison, correct.
Okay. So, um, would you like to be her alternate?
I read books.
It's not very often.
It's very infrequent.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Next one, U.S. Marine Corps Liaison.
I'd love to do that for one more year.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to hand it over after. It's my favorite thing on the council, so...
Then we jump to that one.
Yeah, I know. There'll be a fistfight for that one next year and, and it'll be well deserved. But, I mean, frankly, we're all liaising with the military because it's a military town.
Very serious question for you, Steve, do you drink water?
Do you know anything about water?
I use ice cubes in my drinks.
You're gonna be perfect on MODOC then.
Uh, we have several, uh, parts that have water. One is MODOC Representative, another one is, uh, for the Ninth South Orange County Agencies, uh, Moulton-Negale Water.
Yeah, this is, this is an interesting one. So Councilwoman Doncic did not have an interest in, in the water areas, or...
She had that as a time conflict.
As a time conflict. Uh, this is something that Bob was pretty passionate about, and so he covered the scope here. I am not comfortable, but are you? I mean, it's like...
I'm not, I'm not passionate about it, to tell you, just to let you know that I'm not, I'm not passionate about it, but I'll be happy to split it with somebody.
I think, I think you're big grasping of straws at the split.
So, so why don't we do...
No, I'll take one and then let someone take the other one, is what I'm saying.
So why don't we do, why don't we do the following here? So you've got the South County Water Agencies, right?
Moulton-Negale.
Yes.
Before we, before we split it, let me just make my pitch, 'cause I split it one, my first year with, remember it, I think? And it, it became a mess because of the, one topic was being discussed at both.
No, no. Oh, you mean both MODOC and, and the...
Yeah.
It's all able to be coordinated.
And the Water Agencies. What we ended up doing was Jim and I taking it all because the topics that were discussed were both and it was just...
So if, if you're comfortable taking those two, we still had, well, then you've got the South County Watershed Management Area. Is that also something that's jointly with those two down at the bottom? 'Cause there's four. There's the MODOC, Ninth South County Water, then you have DSal, and then you have the Watershed Management Area.
I don't think that Watershed Management Area was very...
No, that wouldn't be, that's runoff. I don't think that's...
Well, and I don't think that one was very busy, is what I was gonna say.
Okay, I'll tell you what, here's, here's what maybe we could do here. If, if, Steve, if you're comfortable doing MODOC and the Water Agencies, I can step up on the DSal and the Management Area Executive Committee, which is the other two water components. Right now, Baker and Ward are on those two.
Right.
And then I'll pick up those two if you wanna do the other two and then we could just liaise jointly on those.
Right.
Okay. And I'm not passionate about water either, but I guess we'll have to pick that one up together.
Okay, tell me that one more time. So you're doing DSal?
I'm doing DSal and I'm doing Watershed Management Area Executive Committee.
Are we gonna have an alternate on DSal? Or is it just you or...
I could be the, I'll be the...
I'll be safe, you guys, yeah.
Yeah. Be the alternate on, on those two?
Yeah, he can be the alternate on my others.
Okay.
Or anyone else. Okay, Mobility Task Force, that was in between those, we're gonna take that off.
Yep, strike it.
Because we sunsetted that, so that can be removed. Peerball Association, Councilmember Ham has been on.
Been going great, no issues.
So you'll continue?
Sure.
Uh, Safety Quiet Zone, we're, we're going to...
Are we sunsetting that?
That's what was recommended.
Was that the recommendation?
That was one of her recommendations.
The Quiet Zone was decided.
With a hurrah, yeah. With a hurrah.
Any issues that come up, we can deal with. Uh, Sand Replenishment Project.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I've, yeah.
Councilmember Ham. You keeping an eye on that sand in North Beach?
Good, it's turned out amazing.
Is it good?
Oh, my gosh.
It's, it's the best sand I've ever seen.
I think Tom heard all my complaints from the last time and he said, you know what, we're gonna take...
Personally went through it by hand?
Yeah, yeah.
Cleaned it all up by himself.
Those little kids, sibs, you know?
Yeah.
Could I alternate with you on that?
Absolutely.
Only because, uh, I was deeply involved with the back on Parks and Rec when we first initiated with it. I went through a ton of information on it and so, um, I know a lot about it and what it can be done, so I'd like to work with you on it.
Perfect.
That's great. Uh, SCAG, did you have any interest in that?
No.
Okay, so Councilmember Doncic.
She did express an interest, willing to continue with the SCAG General Assembly, yes.
I'm sorry, I did it for three years, you know, I'd be happy to hand that over.
Hand it off, okay.
Move on.
Uh, Social Service Community Service Budget.
She's keeping it.
She's...
She has to continue that as well.
Already did watershed.
Yep, we did that. TCA, we're deferring, right?
I think we post Colan, I think, I think she's gonna be the one for that one.
And Joanne?
Watershed, you just doing that?
Yeah, that's Tim.
That's Tim Brown?
With alternate Schwartz.
That's me with, uh, Steve is the alternate.
And then Joanne on that list for TCA, all of those, uh, the first two have been combined to one meeting. So you could put Transportation Corridor, JPA Board, San Joaquin Hills and Foothill Eastern.
Okay.
And not have two. And it, the 9:30 time is correct and the second Thursday is correct.
Oh, does that mean that person's...
Yeah, they're down.
They're increasing their, uh, monthly seven by fifty percent by going to both those meetings?
That's what it was and we voted to, to condense it because it was a waste of money.
Okay, got it.
And that's why Mayor Baker gave it to me. It was, he said, we're, they're gonna condense them, it's a good idea.
So all three and you get paid only the one time?
Yeah.
Well, actually, if they call you, you, you will get paid, just to, if they call you in, but, uh, a lot of the committees, because the TCA has, has moved on and is now presenting their projects, uh, there's not a lot of committees beyond, so it will just be one meeting.
Should all three of those be combined?
No, because they, as needed, it's as needed, they could call you for a special meeting or something.
So we're combining San Joaquin and Foothill, but we're leaving Transportation Corridor system separate?
Yeah, that's an alternate.
Yes. Put those two together. We used to start at 9:30 and then we, we do one after the other, San Joaquin Hills first, but we voted to combine them several months ago, so there's only one meeting with, for both those agencies, it's one board now.
Great, now would you want to continue on as alternate, at least?
Yes, I would be an alternate if, uh, I think it, it, it is a good idea to have Lori be on that.
Yeah.
Uh, she knows so much about the transportation with the OCTA background, um, and it would be good, I think, to have someone else on that and I, of course, would love to back her up on that and work on that, too. The last one, I believe...
Jim's...
Oh, Vector Control. Yeah, Wallet Recognition.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty minor commitment.
Yeah. So you're gonna stay on that?
Yeah, unless Steve, you want, it's not, yeah. Okay. So, uh...
You'll be happy that...
You'll be happy.
Do we need to, uh, make a motion for those changes, Joanne, or are you good with that?
We could just do it by consensus.
Okay.
Okay, and just remember that we have, we're, we are gonna cover a couple Lories that we stuck her in, that we're gonna give her some wiggle room on.
Do you want me to bring back the whole list next time for ratification or...
Just the TCA, I think, there's three TCA ones, the only ones, 'cause everything else was, she got to keep what she wanted.
Okay.
I think it, if you, Joanne, sorry, if, if you could, some of them might ask us for minutes of the amended order and just credentials if it gets reformal, so if you wanna just approve the rest of the slate as amended tonight, I'd recommend you do that there if someone else, Joanne, did.
I'm, I'm moving that we approve the recommended changes, uh, with the exception of the TCA, JPA Boards and the Transportation Corridor System.
And as the designated person to second things, I'll go ahead.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ham, uh, second by Schwartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, passes four zero to bring it back with an amended list.
Okay. City Manager?
So thank you, uh, first, congratulations to our newly installed council members. Um, today I had an opportunity to represent the city. Um, if you could bring up those slides, please, Laura. Um, the FAM, please. So FAM had a dedication to what they call their family house, um, so I was there with the city, um, as well as a number of partners that helped, uh, with this, uh, house. Taylor Morrison was there, um, and then if you can go to the second slide, please. Um, FAM designated, oop, a brick, there are bricks for donors in the planner and they put one for the City of San Clemente, right by the front door, uh, which was pretty cool. And then they also presented the city with this, uh, fantastic recognition that we'll be finding a place to hang prominently in the, uh, city hall. Um, I can't say how beautiful the remodel of this house was. It was, kinda made me feel like my house wasn't as good as this house. Um, Taylor Morrison had ninety days to do the remodel, um, they wanted to have it for transitional housing before Christmas and it's for families and it is completely furnished and ready to go and there were tons of donations that stocked blankets, sheets, towels, laundry, soap, all of those things, so it was something very, uh, FAM was very proud of and I'm glad the city could be there. So, um, that is all I have, uh, for tonight, so thank you.
City Attorney?
Uh, nothing else, just happy holidays to, to all you. Enjoy seeing you next year.
Thank you.
Councilmembers?
I got some stuff tonight.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Laura, can you pull up that map? So the first one is, uh, I've been talking briefly with the Historical Society about getting them a museum potentially on Del Mar, and so I'm gonna ask that council support me in agendizing for discussion, um, when she brings it up, I'll be able to talk some more detail, but essentially there's a location on Del Mar next to the community center that's you, being utilized as stored for BPR and it's premier, it's a premier location. I mean, it's on Del Mar, right behind the park, um, at the community center.
About that, Waldorf area?
Yeah, it used to be the Shuffleboard Court and now it's just purely storage. Um, so in talking with the Historical Society, they're extremely interested, I would like to have staff take a look at it more in depth and we can have a discussion on potentially leasing that space, um, something similar to what we do with the art gallery, so I think it'd be a great amenity for not only us, but the Historical Society, visitors, residents, everyone. So, yeah, if you can just push the map button, or the, the Google Earth button, I guess, so the satellite view in the bottom left corner there? Let's show you guys where we're talking about. Zoom in there. A little rolly, rolly thing. Oh, rolly the other way. Oh, man. Oh, there it is, okay, perfect. Okay. So, see, right there, yep, that, that hole, no, go back where you were. Move your mouse back, Laura.
It's the trees.
Up a little bit, up, yeah.
The tree is right from there.
There you go. Yeah. That, right where the mouse cursor's at, look currently, that used to be the Shuffleboard Court and it's actually a pretty neat little area, it's already secured, so, um, you wouldn't need much work, but I think it's something worth talking about.
Parks and Rec, some of the crew used to work out of there.
Not anymore.
Way back, okay.
Yeah.
So I thought I'd ask.
Yeah. Does anybody have any opposition to that?
No, I'm good with that. It's a great idea.
So Eric, whenever staff, uh...
We will begin working on it and bring it back to council with some, uh, things to deliberate on.
Perfect.
Staff concerns?
Just concerns, T and attendant improvements, whatever we need to bring forward to make sure that it's...
The whole can of worms that is open by getting all your guys' support, so get ready.
We didn't, we supported putting it on the...
Exactly, exactly. Uh, the next one is, uh, I'm gonna ask that we, uh, follow up with Dr. Colan's request and we try to get staff to, uh, get some mortality rates, uh, in our community since closure of San Clemente Hospital.
On that topic, um, I would just like to offer my assistance in working with the hospital in any type of meetings to try to come to a resolution during the campaign, which at times was crazy, uh, but there, I, I did get some input, so, um, I would love to help and see if we can get this thing resolved sooner and cheaper than later.
Absolutely.
So, just let me know.
Okay. And then, uh, the final one, which is, which is a good one, is I get to announce that we're finally, uh, football champions, state champions, the San Clemente Tritons.
That's it, I've been waiting all, I've been waiting all evening, put this on.
And they're not putting the camera on you.
Even though I'm not a trip, put this on, I didn't even graduate from there from crying out loud.
My hat's in the truck, but I'm very excited, whoa, you big head.
Well, by the way, my son did graduate from there.
I'm Ronald Burgundy and you're Big Head Tim. That's how this works, I guess. Uh, no, I am, I'm tremendously excited about this. This is a fantastic, uh, thing to be celebrating. Tomorrow, which you, it's on the screen right now, starting at three, I think the actual event will kick off at 3:30, will be a, uh, Tritons Celebration Parade down Del Mar and it'll be culminating at the, uh, community center, just where we were pointing at a second ago. Eric, you look like you want to say something.
So we'll be, we'll be, we'll be starting at the top of Del Mar, so we'll be closing down Del Mar and doing a procession toward, towards the end at the community center where we'll have a stage, uh, dignitaries will be invited to come and speak and the football team will be there. I've been getting texts throughout the meeting from, uh, high school athletics directors, so we've got a couple of alumni that'll be participating in it. We've got the Nick Pasquale Foundation that will be there and confirmed, and we've got some other outreaches as well, so the high school, um, has been just ecstatic with the, the, the city's want to do this and they're just pumped. We're gonna be filming it, um, and it won't be able to be streamed live, however, we'll be filming and editing it and putting it on our YouTube channel as well as our public access thereafter to show it over and over again, so for people who, um, didn't get to
to see it. We've heard that people are flying in for this parade because of the, of this, so this is gonna be a big thing. DBA's working with us, the Chamber's working with us, and it's been really great.
Is, is Sam gonna be there?
Is Sam?
You don't know who Sam is?
Uh, Sam Darnold, he's the, one of the alumnis that we're currently working on trying to get as well, but I haven't received confirmation.
Oh, Trojans. Anyway, so are we meeting, are we gonna meet down?
Council's gonna be getting some information in the morning via email, we have reserved parking and everything else, and we'll give you an itinerary, which has been a very fluid situation that we've been putting together, it's kind of been changing by the hour, but we'll be sending emails in the morning, letting you know where to park, and the program, and your.
Probably get our One Town, One Team hats?
You, wear whatever you'd like, yes.
Actually, I have info on that, at HH Cotton's at 2:00, they will be selling sweatshirts and t-shirts, but I don't know about hats, I was hoping hats, too, so, 2:00.
Very exciting.
And just want to think, I want to thank staff, they've been working really hard on getting a banner that'll hang over El Camino Real, I think we're gonna have in the parade tomorrow.
We're picking it up in the morning, and it'll be in the front of the parade, and then eventually, we're gonna be hanging it over ECR, so that we'll be able to congratulate our Tritons, and then this banner will also be used for future events to show our support for the Tritons.
And you did invite the media, right, so we'll have all kinds of media coverage.
Correct, we've already sent a press release out, so the media's aware as well.
Okay, that's it.
Tim?
Yeah, so, in, in a segue, and to cover much of what I was discussing earlier regarding our ethics policy, I, I think what we have is, is a need to revisit our, and review our ethics policy. It was intended to track, in many ways, the Political Reform Act, but it includes text that does not conform to the current provisions of the Act and the FPPC regulations, which have been amended since our policy was adopted, and so I'd like to direct staff to bring back a summary of the discrepancies there, and analysis of the elements of the policy that have presented problems, ambiguities, and ambiguities, uncertainties in application over the past few months. We're having a lot of complaints, and the system right now, frankly, is not, doesn't really handle these things very well, because of just the way it's structured, so I'd like also report to include discussion of other enforcement agencies' responsibilities over areas that are covered by our current policy. You know, many times after we run their ex policies, we're referring to FPPC, that's their, that's their item, that's the Attorney General, so are we unnecessarily delivering on items? There's a lot of questions that come up every time these come. It's unfortunate that this has come to light, but frankly, it needs to be handled rather sooner or later, so I'd like to agendize a council review of our policy, and update it to better match the realities of, of, you know, the other, of the other political, of the Political Reform Act and other regulations that are in place.
I think it's timely, great idea. Any comment?
Yeah, I want to thank you for, I got through this with no blood. So, that I, that I appreciate. I'm looking, really looking forward as, as, as we go through, go forward, in dealing with our issues that we have, that we're all very much aware of. I may have some ideas that might help, might help, but as, I, I look to work with all of you to get things resolved, and get things going straight, we have to deal with the transience, we have to deal with the panhandling, we have to deal with the, the drug issues that we have, I'm looking forward to meeting with the Matrix and see, I think that was a great idea, and I'm really looking forward to hearing what their, their suggestions are gonna be, and I welcome the opportunity, I want to thank you very much.
Great, that sounds great. I have one issue that I do want to talk about, as the existing director for TCA. At the last TCA meeting, I made some comments on council's position, our city's position